All right, Deb. Good afternoon, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled September 10 edition of the City of Atlanta's Finance and Executive Committee meeting. I'm Howard Shook, Chair of the Committee. Vice Chair Juan is to my right. Ms. Bakhtiari is somewhere here. Mr. Hillis is here. Ms. Overstreet is here. Mr. Winston is here. So we have a quorum. I'm going to call the meeting to order and make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Second by one. Let's open the vote.
Vote is closed. Five yeas, yearenes.
All right, thank you. And what do we want to do with these lovely minutes? Second, let's open that vote.
Vote is closed. Five yeas, yearenes.
Minutes have been adopted. That takes us to public comment. Mr. Perry. Well, that's for the public hearing. Is that right? Okay, we'll get to that hopefully shortly. That takes us to the first of our two presentations today. AIM, you are up first if you're ready. Afternoon.
I am Jason Sankey, Chief Information Officer for the City, and I also oversee the Department of Atlanta Information Management. Most of the information that you'll hear today is as of July 31st. In support of the Mayor's Pillars of One Safe City, a city of opportunity for all, a city built for the future, and an effective and ethical government, in FY25, we introduce our four focus areas to support these goals. And in FY26, we are continuing our effort and strategy around these focus areas. In fact, everything we do as a department aligns with ensuring a secure environment, the reliability of technology services throughout the city, enhanced customer experience, and employee growth and development. This information comprises our FY25 actuals. As you see, I am happy to report that the department's budget was relatively flat with less than a 1% variance from our adopted budget. This next dashboard represents both our personnel and non-personnel operating budget for the current fiscal year, our forecast, and our year-to-date budget consumption. Although this is only one month of data, we will take the intentional approach as we do each year to ensure that our adopted budget is aligned with our actuals as we've done in previous years. The current department headcount is 100 FTEs with four positions that have vacated since the beginning of the fiscal year, and those positions are currently on hold with the Vacancy Review Board. From a legislative perspective, this slide offers an overview of the procurements in fiscal years '25 and '26, of which we've executed 35 contracts. We have 24 contracts currently in process, and we secured over 20 micro and small purchases. Based on our departmental strategy for this fiscal year, we will save an early estimate of approximately $2 million in the general fund. From a project perspective, there are currently 112 projects that are in flight, of which 98 are controlled, 13 are in caution, and one is in critical status. We are also enhancing our demand management processes so we can ensure we capture the overall portfolio and capacity needing to support the growing number of projects throughout the city. We recently introduced products like Microsoft Copilot for a few hundred users across the city, and I'm pleased to say that later this month, we will be launching Microsoft Copilot Chat to all employees, and this will allow them to leverage generative AI for better outcomes and advance operational effectiveness throughout the city. Additionally, we introduced Tech Tuesdays, which provides live streaming of technology products used throughout the city. So far, we've provided training on OneDrive, SharePoint, Microsoft Teams, Power BI, and Here are a few project highlights that we completed since our June update to this FEC committee. To support Mayor Dickens' Interfaith Luncheon, we created online registration, reporting, and event coordination. From a public safety perspective, we supported the infrastructure for rolling out body-worn cameras at the Department of Corrections. In support of the Belt Line, we provided project management oversight and technical support for the West Side camera installation. To assist with fleet vehicle rideshare services, we established a dedicated phone number, relocated and installed the vehicle rideshare kiosk at City Hall. We also decommissioned legacy infrastructure, which resulted in enhancing our security posture and improving operational efficiencies throughout the city. This concludes my presentation. I want to take a moment just to thank the AIM employees for all their continued hard work. I also want to thank this board, this committee today, for your time, and I look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Thank you. Ms. Bakhtiari and Mr. Amos have joined us. Questions or comments for the Commissioner? I've got just a couple. What is the critical project you referenced that's behind schedule or behind schedule critically?
In the appendancy section under A1, this is a project with Department of Park and Recs where we are providing wireless access for employees and guests at DPR locations throughout the city. This critical status is due to the need for telecom resource availability at the courthouse to complete the one-for-one replacements.
All right. I'm just kind of curious, since we went paperless some years ago, how much more paper do we consume, do you guess, on a percentage basis, just roughly?
I would need to look into that information.
No, I was hoping you'd do better. All right, so you mentioned the Vacancy Review Board. We're going to take a deeper dive into that via our next presenter, but, and so we'll hear from someone who's sort of sits, one of the people sitting at the head of that table, but I'm curious, since you're one of the people who comes before it, you know, with your proposed hires, just what's your, what are your impressions of it?
I feel it's a sound control that adds an extra layer of thought around resource and need to backfill resources, as an example. So we had a meeting on Monday with the COO and the departments that roll into the COO, and we actually talked about the Vacancy Review Board, and a couple of things that stood out. As we look at positions, especially backfill positions, are we looking at them in terms of can they be compressed? Can there be other opportunities to reorganize the existing structure in order to absorb that work elsewhere? We're also looking at whether this is a point-in-time strategy or is it long-term? How does this fit with the long-term workforce plan for the city? And I think that level of extra thought that goes into this process is value for the city as a whole. It could be frustrating month over month at the department level, but strategically is the right thing to do.
I mean, I hear she did a very good job of just expressing the narrowness of the tight-rope FY26 is on, which I appreciate, and those of us who were here in '08 very much appreciate. I'll thank you. Other questions for the Commissioner? All right, Commissioner, you're getting off light today.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, we will hear from HR and discuss the VRB and other things.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
To Chair Shook, Vice Chair Juan, I'm Calvin Blackburn, Commissioner for the Department of Human Resources, and I'd like to present to you today, I think, my click right here? Oh, you got it. My pleasure to present. You always hire people smarter than you are, especially with technology. So I'm happy to present today the Department of Human Resources Quarterly Presentation. Next slide. So since my appointment as Commissioner, we had an all-hands-on-deck meeting and was happy to roll out our new mission and vision statement. I will not bore you with reading it, but I will tell you that our focus really is on customer service. We are focusing and orienting all that we do on attracting, retaining, training, retaining, if you will, employees who are just committed to delivering first-in-class customer service, not only in HR but across the city. And if we do our jobs, we should feel an impact not only in HR but across the city. So that is our new focus and mission. Next slide. So just a few brief highlights. Talent acquisition: Successfully hired 737 interns and seasonal employees across all departments. They introduced a candidate engagement video welcoming new hires, and if I can just brag on them for a second, that video is Madison Avenue slick. It is something that goes out to our new employees. I think it's first-rate. I just want to tell them they did a great job on that. Also, we've upgraded our Oracle recruitment to improve efficiency, consistency, and the user experience. So that's, talent acquisition's been busy. Next slide. Public safety and wellness. That has decreased, the utilization has decreased by 23% from May to July, and that's primarily due to joint events that have been held in May and June. Sessions were conducted in collaboration with the wellness team. So rather than hosting large group programming, the focus shifted toward more individualized programs. So that's why you might see a bit of a downshift there, but for good reason. Next slide. EAP utilization. Over the past quarter, EAP utilization decreased from approximately 1,112 in May to 986 in August. It's about a 11% decrease, and again, that's due to some positive things going on. Improved employee well-being and resilience contributed to that. There's been increased use of preventive wellness programs and other support resources, and there's been better workplace engagement and satisfaction, reducing the need for intervention. So less utilization coming basically because we're getting good results with the program. So want to make you aware of that. Next slide. This is a brief moment to brag on our organizational development team. They've conducted numerous professional development classes for the City of Atlanta. You should know that from May through July, organizational development has trained 1,500 employees. And just to give you a list of some of the things they've done, the trainings, building dreams teams, that's team formation. They've been working on building a culture of trust, building a culture of resilience, summer college internship orientation, professional development, and numerous others. So they've been very busy and provided you a nice collage, photo collage showing their activity. So organizational development, yeah, very busy on it. They're playing an important role on training customer service-oriented employees and fulfilling the mission that we rolled out. Okay, on to the Vacancy Review Board. So I want to provide some information on the activities of the Vacancy Review Board. You heard a little bit about it from Chief Sankey moments ago, but wanted to report on our July activity. In July, there were a total of 475 RTFs that were submitted. You should know that, again, 149 of those were placed on hold. Even though those are placed on hold, you should be aware that these holds are generating monthly savings while these positions remain unfilled. When we hold them, we are giving the heads of departments opportunities to reevaluate their needs and assess their operations. Basically, do you really need this position? Do you really need this increase? Have you maximized the efficiencies in your department, or you seek additional person power, if you would? Some of these positions actually might even be abolished by the mid-year report. Let me tell you why a lot of these positions are held, and it's mainly in three areas. It's pending additional information that we need, budget constraints, classification and compensation review. Now, let me tell you a little bit about the 326 that were approved. A goodly number of those had to do with public safety. We had 100 police officers for APD, 45 communication dispatchers, and there were additional promotions for sergeants and investigators. Also, aviation and watershed had approximately 27 backfills, 25 backfills, and so forth. And there were other approvals across various departments. So the Vacancy Review Board is doing its job and increasingly getting better at doing its job of holding the line on just rubber stamping, employee increases, hirings, and we look to get better at that as well. And our main purpose is to make sure that staffing aligns with the mission across the city of controlling headcount while at the same time not compromising service delivery, safety, and compliance. So it's a bit of a tight rope to walk, but we are committed to doing that, and I suspect you will see increased holds and rejections as we move forward. But I don't know if there are any questions about that, so I'll hold for a second before I move on to the next slide. Okay, thank you. Next slide, employee headcount. Again, you see presently 9,473 field positions, 2,200 vacancies. The city maintains about an 81% fill rate and a 19% vacancy rate. This is slightly above the public sector benchmark, which is around 12% to 18%. Holding the line here, though, this reflects our careful, budget-minded approach to hiring and is focused on filling only mission-critical roles that directly support our operations. And our goal is to continue trimming down the headcount. I should also note, too, vacant positions have been decreased as priority roles were filled. The city continues to be mindful of budget constraints by limiting hiring, again, to only essential needs. Please be advised that all remaining vacancies will undergo further review and may be recommended for abolishment even at the upcoming mid-year personnel paper. So those are our current headcount numbers. Next slide. And just a little breakdown by department. Next slide is regarding field positions with extra help. Not a lot new there. Do not be surprised that APD remains the largest department regarding field positions with 2,300 employees. Next slide. Vacant positions, again, APD remains the largest department with the most vacant positions, and then you see others, fire corrections. I'm sorry, it's on the wrong slide. Again, APD remains the largest department with the most vacant positions, and other vacancies occurring in aviation, fire, also see a significant number in parks and rec. Next slide. Terminations and separations during the same period. This slide reflects the total number of terminations and separations during the relevant period, which includes a total of 782 people who left the payroll. That was either by death, seasonal exits, resignations, retirements, and involuntary terminations. Parks and Rec had the highest number of separations, and that's largely due to their seasonal staff exits. The field number for parks should see a decline with additional seasonal positions ending. Atlanta Police and Aviation experienced the most resignations, and Aviation had the highest number of involuntary separations. Next slide, just a few upcoming priorities. We have the Kaiser Walk coming up September 25th. Veterans Day will be November 5th and 6th, and we have programming for that. Reminder, very important, open enrollment, November 3rd through 14th. So our benefits team is getting geared up to prepare for that. Total compensation statements, we've been working hard on getting those done. We're looking forward to getting those out in late September, October, and also Phase Two of the class and comp study. That'll be rolling out January of 2026. Next slide. Finally, I just want to talk about some of the innovations that we're doing in the Department of Human Resources. Our team came up with a new program called Voices of the City. It's sort of a new fireside chat series that gives employees the opportunity to hear inspiring stories from some of our leadership. Our first session got off to a rip-roaring start, was well-received, and we featured our own CFO, Mohammed Bala, and it was greatly attended. Everyone learned a lot from it, and we were proud to have him. We look forward to doing more of those, but again, these are some of the programming that we're offering at DHR. We thank Chief Bala for his participation as well. And before I turn over questions, I want to thank also my team, 148 of us in HR who go about doing the quiet job of taking care of the city's needs every day, and also want to thank my team for helping me prepare the presentation. Happy to entertain any questions at this time.
All right, thank you for being brisk, Mr. Juan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for the report. Very helpful information as we go into this fiscal year, trying to keep a close eye on our spend rate as we anticipate additional headwinds with our budget. First off, the terminations, separations, I want to confirm that's just for the month of July, right? You mentioned the period, but I wasn't sure if that was...
Yes, July 31st, yes.
Okay, okay, so it's a one-month snapshot or...
Yes, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Vacancy Review Board numbers. I will admit, and I appreciate the briefing that I got on this beforehand, and I shared this with you all, but this is really more for the administration. I'm actually quite surprised at the numbers here. First, very surprised at the volume. I did not expect that we would have 400 to 500 in just one month. I understand that August numbers look about the same in terms of quantity. You know, I thought it was a kind of a place of last resort, and my gut thought that number would be around 200 or so. I'm not sure what my benchmark was, but to see this number surprises me. But what surprises me more is the number of acceptance and approvals, because what had been represented to us during the budget process was that this was a very stingy process, or, yeah, a stingy process. And to me, and we've talked about this, three out of every four requests are approved. And so I would have expected the exact opposite, that it was going to be one out of every four. So it was one of those things where commissioners would be reluctant to come in, knowing that the odds were stacked against them, and there had to be a very solid case for that rare time that someone would make it through the trap and get approved. The other thing that troubles me a little bit is that of the 149, those weren't all denied. I mean, some of those are still alive and will be considered at another date. So the acceptance rates are actually even higher than the 326 number could be. So I just say all this, that this is a one snapshot, this is the first time we're looking at this. It'll be very interesting to see what August numbers look like, but the signal I'm hoping to send to the administration, to the members of the VRB, to the commissioners, is that this, this isn't helping. This isn't, this isn't creating the fiscal constraint, restraint, and responsibility that I thought, and the discipline I thought we were going to, we had been represented was taking place. And while we only have one month of financial numbers, even those are starting to suggest that we're going to blow past some of our personnel numbers for the year, and we're only two months in. So again, just appreciative of the numbers gives us a point to then compare when we see August and September, but I'm hoping that your department, the others that are driving the VRB, and the user agencies, will not see this as the norm and that at some point, we will inflect over to, yeah, good luck. You know, the notion out there should be like, good luck going to the VRB. You're not likely going to get it. It's worth a try. Whereas this one's like, oh, yeah, let's just throw everything against the wall and see, because three out of four are going to make it through, so why not? But again, appreciate all the work you're doing and the data you presented. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and to you and your team. I'll keep it pretty brief. I was taking a look at, on the vacant position page, I was curious, I believe that's procurement, or I'm sorry. Yep, no, I'm sorry. Field positions with extra help. I'm looking at, I'm guessing that's procurement, that's at 773?
No, that's Parks and Rec.
PRC is Parks and Rec?
Yes, Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Yep.
So I'm guessing that would be seasonal then?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. I was looking at that thinking it was procurement, and I have so many questions, so...
No, no, no.
Well, good, we averted one crisis. So my other question was looking at watershed. I know we've had a change in leadership with vacancies and vacancies, and a lot of us have noticed that we've had some delays, and so I'm curious as to what those positions are, how close we are to getting those done, and obviously tackling the backlog that we currently have.
As far as specifically watershed?
Yes.
It would be hard of me to comment on each and every one of them. I know they're...
The position, I get that part. I'm asking, do we know, or are we making progress with positions there? We have been told that there are new, there are more leadership opportunities open to help support our new commissioner, and obviously changes. So I'm curious as, are those higher positions out? Are we actively looking for those positions? Do we have applicants for those positions?
Yeah, I would have to consult with the Commissioner. I'm not sure about that answer. I know that they've been actively hiring in numerous... Yeah, I'm advised that VRB, at VRB, we did deny a lot of their requests, but recently we've approved some, so I don't know what the latest updated numbers are, but we are paying a close eye to what's going on in watershed as far as their hiring. But I can provide you some more specific numbers.
And if you could do the same with code enforcement, I know that we're at, I believe we, I think we're at 24, but I want to say that we are funded for 36, and so curious, I believe that we were telling people to apply, but also free, so I'd like to understand what might be happening there.
Right, and that's what I want to speak to. While we are trying to hold the line, we still understand that when it comes to service delivery, mission-critical things and compliance, we're not preventing those positions behind. We have to get the city's business done, but we're just asking people to take a more careful look, and instead of just blindly labeling something as mission-critical, really explaining why that is, because that's what everyone does. But we're really trying to force people to become more efficient in their decisions and not just willy-nilly throw bodies at positions. And so, but it's service, safety, compliance, those sorts of things we are allowing to go through, if you will. And so to the extent people make arguments that make sense regarding that, those are surviving VRB.
Thank you. And noticing the, under termination separation, that, you know, we've had a loss to some of our employees, so adding into that, that I hope all of us keep them, and those employees and their families in our thoughts and prayers.
Yes.
So thank you so much for this, and that concludes my questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others, I've got just one real quick one, and just full disclosure, you were nice enough to sit down and meet with me earlier today, and so that's where I got most of my questions asked and answered, so thank you. Happy to see the 145 APD and related public safety hires. Anyone here, off the top of their head, if it take, can tell us where we are now with the sworn, our sworn number is? Looking at you, Peter. 1777. Okay, thank you. That's a very patriotic answer. All right. Does anyone have anything else? And you know, we're all, we are keeping a watchful eye on this. I mean, it's, as we said last time, you know, we're one month in, so that's like trying to guess the outcome of an NBA game after five minutes, but we're all still suffering PTSD from last time, and so I will ask you this, because I think people who are listening will be interested. If I'm Commissioner of the Department of Widgets, you know, and I want to hire 50 people, give me some... and I want to hire 50 people, give me some advice, what's the best way I can pitch these hires? I mean, that they're people who we have to have to comply with state and federal requirements, they're, you know, who are the people who are going to, who are going to get the stamp of approval?
Well, again, as far as hypothetical is concerned, again, it would be concerning whether you can show clearly that this is a service delivery issue, that the work won't get done lest these folks are hired, that somehow it will keep us from being in compliance, or that it's a safety sort of issue. But what I want even more, and what we're working toward doing that, is proof that you've looked at positions and you understand how many staffing ratios have been done. I think we mentioned when we talked, we're working on getting that part done, that you can show objective, not the feelings, not a thought, because we've had somebody with objective indicia that suggests that this is a necessary position for any of those three. So I would recommend almost a business plan is what we're looking at moving toward, where you can show that you can get the work of your department done, or you cannot comply with federal, state, or local law, or there's a safety issue if you don't hire these folks. What's been happening too much in the past is we hired, we had 50 before, and we need another 50. But no, we need to understand, and also, also add this, that you also can show that you've maximized your efficiencies in your department, that you've looked at every other way to get these tasks done, and you can't get it done at all without hiring these 50. That's where we're moving to, that's the line we're trying to hold, and people will be successful if they can present that. Instead of just the blanket where we got in the past, "Mission critical, I need it." But no, you're going to have to really prove that it's mission critical.
All right, well, I mean, I've always noted in the past, seems to me that if you have an organization that has achieved a level of national accreditation that only 5% of those agencies get, and you've carried a 20% to 25% vacancy rate for the last 20 years, you don't need those positions. That's just how I look at it. So if I want to hire, if I want to bring in someone at a higher salary than the person we're replacing, but how does that go over?
That doesn't go over well at all, actually. We, part of our review is to look at what the previous salary was. And if, generally, we're rejecting those if you're requesting that you want to fill the position at a higher salary. We're generally not approving those, am I correct? As far as VRB is concerned. So no, that's, that's sort of, if I use a legal term, that approach is generally disfavored.
All right, I appreciate, appreciate the work you do. And Ms. Weeks, anyone else? All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
The rest of the HR team, and thank you for not bringing everyone in here today. Oh, yeah. All right, that brings us to our public hearing item. Let me sound the caption, and we'll get to our public commenters. This is 2501417, a substitute ordinance by Finance Exec to amend the city code of ordinances which are listed here. Occupation tax to reflect updated laws and standards to improve customer service standards, to increase operational efficiencies, to levy a more appropriate occupation tax, and to better reflect the cost to the city for the issuance of the occupation tax certificates, to amend the occupation tax table, and for other purposes. I will move to open the public hearing. Second by Bakteri, let's open that vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed.
All right, the public hearing is open, and we have up to now one person signed up, Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Kevin Perry. I'm the president and CEO of the Georgia Beverage Association, which is the trade association for the soft drink industry in Georgia. And I am here on behalf of my largest member, which is the Coca-Cola Company, Atlanta's very own Coca-Cola. We certainly understand the need to address the city's revenues. However, we are asking for a just, a short break to allow us to work with you all on a compromise and a different proposal, maybe that we could share some new ideas before moving forward. Specifically, this ordinance would increase annual license tax on large Atlanta-headquartered companies by 400%, an increase versus only a 67% increase on most businesses. The tax rate applicable to all businesses would increase by 67%, while the gross receipts cap applicable to, applicable to a very small number of large Atlanta-headquartered companies would increase 300% from $200 million to $600 million. Combined effect of these two changes creates a 400 million, a 400% total tax increase. The Atlanta business community has not been aware of this change, except for over the past couple of weeks, as major headquarters only recently learned of this. A 400% increase in the annual business license tax, added on top of all of the many other taxes businesses pay is a dramatic and punitive increase that creates a negative cloud over Atlanta's business climate. So what we are simply asking is to pause before moving this forward and allow us to work with you and the administration on an equitable resolution to this issue.
All right, thank you for that. And at this time, I think it's appropriate to swing it over to the CFO. Well, yeah, I'll move to close the public hearing, as long as there's no one else here. All right, motion's been made and properly seconded, and let's have that vote.
Vote is open.
Good afternoon.
I'm sorry, Ms. Overstreet.
I did want to ask Mr. Perry, he said a slight pause. I want to know what that looks like, like what, what are you asking specifically?
Councilmember, we'd be happy...
Unless someone else knows, and I just don't know.
Councilmember, we'd be happy with a couple of weeks. Just in time for us to, we don't, I don't get the impression that a lot of corporations that are headquartered in the city are aware of this ordinance, and it's moving rather quickly. So just in enough time for us to get together and meet with you all and discuss options.
So you mean, meet with councilmembers, or with the administration? Like, who would you like to meet with about it?
Whoever wants to meet with us.
All right, just wanted to get some, you know, clarity around what you were asking. Thank you.
All right, Mr. CFO.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers. And I do have some presentation for everybody. I don't know if it's going to be on...
One moment, I'm sorry. We, the motion to close hasn't actually finished the process.
Okay.
The vote is open. And it's closed, seven yeas and zero nays.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. I'm Mohammed Bala, Chief Financial Officer, City of Atlanta. So I do have some brief slides that I'd like to go over with you with regards to the occupational tax ordinance revisions. One thing that you guys have known very well, even throughout the budget development process, was that the city was looking at ways to make sure that there's equitable distribution for our, for our general fund revenue structure. And the general fund revenue structure over the last couple of years and since before COVID has really shifted the burden of the city's cost structure into homeowners and residential taxpayers. This specific category back before COVID, and even as early as 2018 and 19, represented about 12% of the general fund revenues. And this year's budget's about 7% of the general fund revenues, which means that most of the cost structure has been borne on the homeowners of the City of Atlanta. So we were working across the board to make sure that there's a more equitable distribution on the city's cost structure. So one thing that we did is we looked at various amounts of fee structures, and one that stood out was this occupational tax structure, which hasn't been updated since 1999. And the current tax structure has a 75% flat fee with per-employee charge and a component based on great grocery receipts. And so when we looked at it more deeply, and we had our consultants dig into this framework, we realized that, you know, most of our peer cities do not have a cap of the $200 million that was instituted here in Atlanta. While the $75 administrative fee is in line with others, it really does not capture the costs for a city like Atlanta and our operations here in the city. So we are recommending the removal of the cap, also adjusting the rate structure to match our peer cities in Georgia, and phasing this over a two-year approach. But we need to do it now, because we have to implement this and make sure that it is programmed into our systems by January 1, 2026. There's also some changes to streamline the code so that it aligns better with the state code. On our national-regional comparisons, you know, we had our consultants look into this, and there's many different ways that municipalities do this across the country. And they're really limited by what the state authorizes each municipality and what it can do. You'll see some municipalities in Alabama use a privileged tax, a headcount tax, that's very punitive, or some large corporate income taxes like New York and Detroit, which Atlanta doesn't have the option to do. But if you look at our regional comps and the way that their tax class structure is organized, you'll see Atlanta's on the lower end of that structure. And so what we're asking is to align ourselves with other large cities in the State of Georgia, and the move will allow us to get closer to a city of Augusta. And while you're looking at it as an increase, a percent increase could look higher or seem high, if you're looking at it as a nominal or total basis, it is still a smaller portion of the overall gross receipts that are collected. So on that first tax structure, that's 60 cents on every $1,000 of grocery receipts. So we're asking for that to be phased in over a two-year period, which will allow the businesses to adjust their operations accordingly. The next slide shows what that phased-in structure looks like. So the cap on grocery receipts, we'll still think that a cap is warranted, so that it's, has a component for how much the highest bracket could be. We, instead of lifting the cap completely off the table, we think a $600 million cap is the appropriate cap, but we want to get there in a two-year period. So up it to 400, and then 600. There will be no changes on the first $10,000, and there's no changes on the per-employee charges. We're sensitive to small businesses as well. But then you also see what the rate structure would be imposed over January 1, 2026, and then again in January 1 of 2027. The administrative fee is the portion that is to recover the costs of conducting these operations, and that will be aligned to the city's cost structure and recovering 80% of the costs. So it's moving from $75 to $191 in 2026, and $215 in 2027. We're also implementing a new fee structure for filers who are delinquent in their filing, and filers who do not file properly. That cost is actually very cumbersome and requires a lot of staff hours and a lot of coordination across many different entities in the City of Atlanta. And the consultants that work with us recommended that fee to be $876, and then we also want to phase that in over a three-year period. So in 2026, it'll be $657, 27701, and in 2028, will be the $867 that's recommended by our outside consultants. So simply, this ordinance does two things. It changes the application fee, and it also makes sure that there's a new complex fee that's added for the administrative services. In terms of a timeline perspective, we have been at this since July. The ordinance, first read was introduced in July. We advertised on the Atlanta Journal-Constitution in August. We met with the Atlanta Journal-Constitution, as well as the Atlanta Business Chronicle, and discussed this increase with them, so that there be visibility and a lot of conversation within the business community. It went to every single MPU, and every MPU had an opportunity to look into this and ask questions. We received questions and fulfilled those requests customarily. And so as you see today in the timeline, we are at the September 10th public hearing notice, and we anticipate this, and we ask for recommendation to move forward so that it gets adopted on Monday, September 15th, allowing us for the Phase 1 implementation on January 1. And I don't think that this is an issue for the city for us to continue to have dialogue going forward, since it is being a phased-in approach. We'll have plenty of time between Phase 1 and Phase 2 if we needed to come back and discuss any other alternatives or options. But we've worked in great detail with the administration, or worked in great detail with Chief Strategy Officer Peter Ayman, who has been someone with a lot of history on the city's cost structure and how we can alleviate some of these pressures. And we will continue to talk to the business community, anybody who has any questions about why this is critical and why this is needed, and why this general fund support is to support the very recommendations that a lot of the business community has been asking for, which is better roads, better public safety, better equipment for police and fire. This is going to support those exact same things that the business community has been asking for, in addition to a better licensing system, in addition to a more responsive profit or revenue, in addition to many other great things that will come out of these additional funding needs for the City of Atlanta.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll defer to...
Yes, good afternoon. Peter Ayman, Chief Strategy Officer for the City of Atlanta. We've been supporting the CFO from the administration on this topic through a variety of exercises. The one thing I just wanted to point out, there was a reference made to a significant increase in the business occupational tax for the couple dozen largest companies, and it is a significant increase. There are a couple things to bear in mind here, though, which is why we don't want to delay. We believe this is a fair and appropriate change and should move forward. For these very largest companies, first of all, it's only on their Atlanta, their Atlanta revenues. So we're not able, nor are we taxing global revenue or even multi-state revenue. This is purely Atlanta slash some revenue associated with Georgia. It's kind of technical in the state and local codes. But first of all, let's, I just wanted to make that clear. This is just Atlanta-based revenue, and it's to defray the costs that we have serving businesses. So the couple dozen of the largest companies, these are companies that have Atlanta-based revenue, say, $300 million, which is why they're going over the cap. And again, most cities don't have this cap. So if you're, let's say, a $400 million company, your tax, your occupational tax right now is about $250,000. So you pay about $250,000, which is not a lot of money to have hundreds of employees using our roads and our police and our fire. Yes, that is going up in a phased approach for those couple dozen companies, from $250,000 to maybe just under $1 million. That's a big percentage increase. But it's still, for a multi-hundred-million-dollar company, $1 million to defray the costs of service to the many, many employees and activities that you undergo in Atlanta. And we don't believe that that is in any way unfair or frankly remarkable, given the costs that the city bears for those very, very large employers. So I just wanted to clarify that there's two things. There's the percentage increase, which yes, is substantial, but the absolute dollars for these very large companies is, you know, a infinitesimally small percentage of revenue.
All right, thank you for that. Before you sit down, let me ask, if Mr. Hillis doesn't mind, if there's any other questions specifically for you or what you just said, Ms. Bakteri, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Ayman. Could you, I appreciate everything you said. Could you kind of speak to the impact? And now we're talking about larger businesses, but some of the smaller businesses that might already be struggling, struggling with our permitting process, licensing review, and a number of other things. Do we know how it would impact, say, a local business and one of our...
Sure, sure, of course. So if you are, and remember, the occupational tax is set up by type of business. So different types of businesses have different rates. So if you are, let's say, a photography studio, just a small, very small business, $100,000 in revenue, when you include the applicant... in revenue, when you include the application fee of $75, currently, you would pay $276 a year on $100,000 business. Next year, you would go, it would go from 276 to 435. So it's a $150, $170 increase, and then the year after that, it would go to 502. So it's phased in over two years, and so you're talking about, this is a small business, but it is $100,000 in revenue, and they do consume services in the city. So you're going from $276 for your occupational tax to 502. Just one more example, if you're a $700,000 restaurant, which would be one of this, you know, medium-sized restaurant, you'd be going from today $1,159 to, in the future, $1,817. So yes, that is a substantial increase, but this hasn't changed in a quarter century. And we are, we are just coming up to the benchmarks of our peer cities, well, frankly, not even our peer cities like Columbus. So we're just trying to both defray the significant costs of serving these businesses and modernize the structure to be, you know, commensurate with what other cities are doing. I would also say that across the whole spectrum of businesses, from very small to very large, when you look at that increase, let's say for the $700,000 restaurant, you know, $1,100 to $1,800 to have your business in the city of Atlanta, it is highly unlikely that you would find it economically appropriate to move your business out of the city of Atlanta for $600 on an almost billion-dollar business, right? I mean, the economics don't work. You're going to move your whole business because it went up by $600. Similarly, if you're looking to locate a business in the city of Atlanta, it's unlikely that you're going to make a decision based on these infinitesimally small percentages of your revenue for our occupational tax, especially since you get returns in terms of better roads, police protection, fire protection, et cetera.
Thank you for that. And yeah, that was, that was, I thought the Business Chronicle actually did a really good job of laying it out. They cited your example about 700,000, and so that was my main concern with small businesses. I appreciate you. I'm going to allow any of my other colleagues to ask you questions before we proceed.
Okay. And I had been reminded that the AJC did publish an article on this, I believe around July 18. Mr. Hillis, you're next, then Mr. Wong, then Ms. Winston.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to, no questions, just wanted to provide some comments. This is very reminiscent of a process I led in my first term and another fee that the city had not touched in 28 years, and that was impact fees. Prior councils had multiple opportunities and administrations to increase those, but we came to a head, and this, or the previous council last term finally did increase impact fees, much to the chagrin of, you know, developers, et cetera. But again, the fact of the matter is, those have not been touched in 28 years. And unless this council and our property taxpayers want to, you know, swallow a much harder pill to swallow next year and increase our property taxes, which, to CFO Ballas' point, and which we discussed during the budget process, now makes up almost 40% of the city's general fund, and that should definitely not be the case. So this is one of, I hope, multiple pieces of legislation that we see about increasing the city's fees that have not been touched in 10, 15, 20-plus years, so we can relieve some of the burden off of our property taxpayers, which, of course, are businesses as well. Businesses also pay property taxes. So just wanted to throw those comments. Thank you.
Mr. Wong.
Thank you. I mean, I want to start by saying that, I mean, I fully appreciate the need to update this, and I recognize that every time we wait this long, ripping that Band-Aid off is going to be painful, and it's going to make some folks squeal, and that's the situation we find ourselves in as folks are starting to contact us. I want to ask a series of questions. First off, the fee structure, I've long complained or cautioned about us updating fee structures based on a potentially inefficient system. So a lot of times, our consultants go in there, and they're like, well, based on what you do today, this is what the updated fee should be versus if you were really running this, a tight ship, the fees would be this and potentially less. Was that exercise done first before we came up with the, and I'm not talking about the percentage, based on revenue stuff, but just the baseline operational cost recovery activities?
Lawrence Davis, Jr., Revenue Chief of the Office of Revenue. In regards to your question, sir, the study was based off of indirect and direct cost recovery. It had nothing to do with the system. It was manpower, basically, and for that, we failed roughly about 31% recovery of our costs. And so even the proposed numbers that are being presented by the CFO today only gives you 80% of the recovery costs. The consulting company really recommended a higher number than what's being presented, as well as removing the cap completely. But the CFO made the executive decision of the rates that are being proposed and the caps that are being proposed now.
Okay. I appreciate that. Again, I just want to make sure that we are not basing our fee study and calculations off of inefficient systems. So thank you for that. Second is around the $600 million cap, the jump from 200 to 600. First off, we have this data. So do we know the number of companies right now that file that are above the $200 million threshold, above the 400, and then above the 600? So we know who we're catching in these traps moving forward?
So I'll do this approximately. In totality, the number of companies that, check my memory here, that are over $200 million, it's about 33, and I think that's roughly divided evenly between the 200 and 400 and the 400 and 600. So we're talking about 33 companies. And again, this is Atlanta revenue, not their global revenue, and the numbers I referenced earlier are, you know, directionally correct for the largest of these, you know, going from 250,000 to 800, 900,000 or $1 million approximately on hundreds of millions of dollars of Atlanta revenue.
Yeah, that's, I just want to know the magnitude of, as we move this up, who we're going to impact. And it sounds like the first jump from 200 to 400 is going to be about 60, well, it'll be 33 companies.
In total, right.
And then, once we do the second jump, it'll be half of those.
Very good.
Okay, all right. What was the magic of 400 and 600 million? Was it an SIC threshold of business size, employee size? What was the logic behind that?
So the logic was a recovery mechanism that is reflective of the burden that a company can have. So if you don't have a limit on a cap completely, it could be very, very high. So you want to make sure that there is some type of cap. And initially, that was the construction around a cap mechanism that was put in place. Even if you just looked at the cap from a CPI perspective, that cap would be 400 million. But that 400 million is not enough, we don't think it's enough to warrant a sufficient cost recovery that gets us back into alignment in a roughly 10, 11% of the general fund revenues being from this source.
So that was the only logic used? It was just math? At what point, if we set these barriers, will get our money back, not? This is industry standard of what's considered a large, significant, I mean, I thought it, that's what I thought we would, we should be basing it on.
A couple perspectives on this. First, the most important answer is the CPI. So it was set a quarter century ago. So the old cap moving to the new number gets you in the 400 million neighborhood. So that's the first thing I would note. And then?
Yeah, and that is true to both points. But do remember, as I stated, most cities that were in the study do not have a cap at all.
Yeah.
And so that would have been a huge financial impact to businesses. It'd have been great for the city, but it would have been a huge financial impact to the businesses.
Okay. To me, then, that's an argument for just taking the cap off. I feel like we've kind of arbitrarily picked 400 and 600 million. 400 may be close to CPI. Okay, I can buy that, but the 600 seems like, I hope I'm not going to make someone blow up here, but if we threw a dart at a board and that was the number we hit versus a industry, you talked about the type of business, the industry you're in. There are metrics out there that the federal government puts out in terms of what constitutes large businesses and stuff. So why would you peg against that?
We're talking about, in the 600, we're talking about, as I said, sort of 15 or less.
Okay, so why?
So there's a, there's a very small number of companies we're talking about. There's not going to be a, CFO, I don't know if you want to...
I just feel like there should be a better logic than it was just where we got our money back.
There's a science and art to it. The cap was put in place initially, right, for a specific reason.
I get that.
It was put in place so that you don't overly, it's not overly punitive. So a cap is, is a bit, you know, in this tax structure, a cap is warranted. And we can argue about the merits of where that cap should be, because if you have no cap, I don't think that's the answer either. Because the math, I mean, the benchmarking says no cap. We've decided that a cap is something that is beneficial to Atlanta businesses. So then you have to work into what an appropriate cap should be. And I figured, with the appropriate cap for us to land in is, we think that this source of revenue should also represent somewhere around its initial construction, which was about 12% to 15% of revenues. You lift the cap off, and all of a sudden, you can get to 20, 25% with two companies paying significantly higher revenues. So that's essentially how it's constructed, and I'd love to talk to you about it a little bit more, more detail.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, okay. And then the two-year step-up was based on just?
A two-year phase-in to make it more palatable for businesses of all sizes to manage.
So one might argue that we, two levers could be that 600 million, I mean, because it is, it's only from a cost recovery basis, and then the two could be three years. I mean, again, I'm, in terms of levers that we have, potentially have on this.
Yes, if you wanted, if you wanted to look at the $600 million cap, and if you wanted to advantage some of the largest global companies in the world and give them more of a break, you certainly could do that.
Okay. All right. I'm going to try and wrap this up because I know my colleagues want to move forward on this. But two-week pause, one cycle?
No. That's a work because we have to program in and get the process in such a way that it can start January 1, which we really need for the next budget cycle, because before you know, we're going to be planning the next budget, and we don't want to have to do more reductions in departments.
Okay. All right. And then finally, I just want to talk about, you mentioned the advertisement in AJC and Business Chronicle and going out to MPUs. The fact that we're getting reached out to now by, we've gotten an email today from Buckhead Coalition as well as Mr. Perry here, you know, we've done a better job in the past when we have legislation that we know is going to hurt or sting some groups of doing more direct reach out to them. I think about the tree protection ordinance and how we, you know, intentionally notified folks, placing an ad and having an article. I'm not sure is the same level of engagement and causes the situation that we're in.
We did, we did have more interaction than that. First of all, I could go to all the NPUs, which pick up a lot of the small businesses.
Small businesses, yes.
Second, it was an article and an advertisement in the AJC. There's substantial articles in both. Third, the mayor did discuss this with the Atlanta Committee for Progress. I've been in conversations with the Metro Chamber of Commerce, and they also have the numbers that I just read off to you. They've had for, the chamber saw this same material a couple months ago, so.
And it was also in the social media, the mayor's social media press pushed this out.
No, I wanted to hear that we...
So we covered all bases in terms of communication and advocacy and getting this in front of everybody who should have known that this was coming. So if everybody's kind of late to the party, it's, I don't think it's an issue in the city.
What I wanted to hear was that he reached, you reached out to the chamber and that he reached out to ACP, the key partners in this. That was left out in the presentation up until when you just said that.
Yeah, no, they both saw this presentation at the same time as the social media post. This is going back a couple months now.
Okay. All right. Chair, I yield.
Thank you both, and what I will, I might try to follow up Mr. Wong's dissertation. And what I will say is, this is difficult for me, but what I will also say is, I am not the subject matter expert on these numbers. I would argue that our most tenured council member says that this is the best finance bench we've had since they've been here, and I would argue that there are few people I trust more than Peter Amon, a man that had a hand in taking our city's reserves from $7 million when we were broke to where we are now. And that was done through policies such as these. What I'll also say is, I understand people not always being in the know. I feel like we've covered our bases. I think that that often, there's always going to be someone who does not know. It is not surprising to me that we are getting emails and calls on the eve of this happening. It shouldn't be surprising to any of us because this happens every single time. We have something that is growing pains for the city. And arguably, I mean, something we can comment on, of course, I'm sensitive to the business community because we are such a big city to do business in, but I also have, and I also have an obligation to my constituency in the fact that we look at our MAF dollars and we look at our infrastructure dollars, and it's a great place to do business, but I would argue that we don't see enough of a return. And I would also argue that our large businesses that profit the most from being here and who also receive large tax breaks from companies, from agencies like Fulton County Development Authority, I would argue that in the growing pains that we are in, and the fact that we are jumping, that, you know, we're no longer a big city with, or a small city with big buildings, like this is the city of Atlanta with the world's busiest airport, and we're talking about growing at an exponential rate. And I don't, and this is where rubber meets road, and this is a hard conversation, but we didn't get into this job for 70/30 issues, it's 50/50 issues. And unfortunately, I think the hard decision for me on this one is that I'm going to have to support because we are just not taxing our businesses. And I cannot, in good conscience, look at my constituency and tell them that we're going to raise taxes if we're not doing it on big, big business. I find it horrific that I have seniors that are paying more in property taxes than BlackRock. So yeah, I appreciate you all for doing this. I know it's a hard-fought issue. I'm going to be completely honest on where I stand on this, but as the council member that sits in this area in one of the fastest-growing cities in the country, with big business at hand, I just, we're overdue, and I will simply leave it at that. And I thank you all for the time, and I know that this is a hard topic, but this is part of our growth trajectory.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Obviously, this is, anytime we start talking about tax increases, I think, you know, especially this body and knowing the people that are up here, we get a little tight having that kind of conversation, especially, you know, given that Atlanta is one of the number-one places for businesses to come here. We've attracted major 500, Fortune 500 companies, 100, you name them, that are here. And so, you know, this is something that affects them, but I don't want to gloss over the fact that this is, in a sense, a tax relief for homeowners. And I just want to see if we can kind of expound on that a little bit, especially some hard numbers. What does this look like? I know we talked about the decrease in occupational tax that we're receiving in the general fund, but just wondering if CFO or Mr. Amon can just kind of expound on that a little bit so we can kind of really understand what that looks like for homeowners.
Thank you. I mean, so we've been very protective of homeowners and the burden on homeowners, and you have seen that we're trying to maintain the current millage rate that we've had over the years. Most recently, we've done the defeesence exercise, which we were able to swap from a bomb mill. But going forward, our intent is to not increase property taxes. So before we come back to property owners about a millage rate increase, we want to look at every other revenue opportunity and every other cost-saving mechanism before we do that. We want that to be the last line of defense because it has been, as Councilmember Hillis mentioned, a growing burden on homeowners, which now represent 40% of the general fund allocation, when it used to be closer to 30%, a little bit less than 30% of the general fund allocation was coming from homeowners. So that's really the intent here. And the intent is, this is the first of many to come. There will be others. We have the same consulting firm looking at other fee structures right now that would like to bring before this body, including parking fees and a host of other fees that will make sure that our, our cost profile is one that is reflective of the burden that's placed on the system, and it's not just on homeowners. So that is really the intent here. You know, we have a large, robust city with many different stakeholders, with much different needs, in a population of 400,000 people. in a population of 400,000 people. And it's inherently unfair to keep that burden on them continuously.
And I'll just follow up with, based on the cap on gross receipts on the, the number of companies that fit between that 200 million and 600 million range, do we have an idea what that would look like in FY '26 and '27?
The number of companies?
Oh, the number, the revenue.
Oh, yeah, we have, I think it was each, each of these, if approved, the estimated increase is roughly $10 to $15 million more to the general fund, which over a two-year period is about $20 to $30 million more to the general fund conservatively. There is a few, number of companies that will probably end up paying a good portion of that, maybe about $2 to $3 million of it, that's consolidated in those companies.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So I have a quick question. I want to know, what are we doing also, instead of just, you know, changing our occupational tax? What are we doing to streamline our permitting processes? Like we have to, if we're going to, you know, charge top dollar, we need to make sure that small businesses are also getting something out of all of this. Like what are we doing to make ourselves better in city planning, permitting, helping our small businesses?
So I can only speak of occupational tax, city planning.
Anybody?
That's a whole different, different process.
But have you all-
But for, for the Office of Revenue, on next Monday, you will have a brand-new robust system that, that's a part of streamlining that will make it more efficient for the office as well as for the customer. For the first time, a customer will be able to see the stages of where their application is from beginning to, to end. And that's something that they cannot see now. And that's not only on, on the occupational side, but that's also on the police alcohol license, which is mandated by APD. APD and the Office of Revenue will be sharing together this new system, which will help the Alcohol Review Board process a lot faster, as well as to help the occupational tax to be processed a lot faster and even more for the complex applications that we have.
And you know, and that's what I'm getting at with this. I do think that when we are adjusting any types of revenues, we should also look at the whole picture. How are we better changing several things that probably aren't right and haven't been changed in a minute? We get quite a few calls and emails from businesses that really are not receiving the types of experiences that they should be from our city. And I want to make sure that we are looking at that also. And, and does that look like, oh, I don't know, better, more numbers in our, our departments, especially in, in areas where they're doing those, those work, doing that work, making sure our license and review boards are being more efficient? There's, we need to just make sure we're looking at all aspects when we're implementing these types of new taxes or, or any kind of new programs that we come up with. And that's why I brought that up. Not that we could, you know, change that today, but I definitely want that to be top of mind as, as we, we make these types of decisions for our city.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks.
So I wanted to ask more thing, but I also, Councilwoman, she take her point as well. And so perhaps also we can talk about voting this through and how some of that can be used to actually staff some of our offices to help with our smaller businesses. But also, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask Finance. Do these large businesses, are they not receiving massive tax breaks on our current federal government with the big beautiful bill? Have they not already?
Yes, there has been very favorable federal tax policies that many of these companies are, large companies are benefiting from, as well as a reduction in their state taxes over the last couple of years. And you see continuation of more favorable overall tax policies. You know, so there's less, even less sources of funding available from the federal government and state government to support cities. So a city like Atlanta does really rely on its own mechanisms of constructing revenue to address its core issues. You know, you've kind of seen maybe some of the information that was shared by Chief Strategy Officer in different settings with regards to how much different cities receiving support from the state and the federal government versus the city of Atlanta, which is very minimal.
Thank you for that. What I'll say is, it seems to me that businesses are currently, bigger businesses are currently making money, honestly, hand over fist with the current federal landscape. And so while I can be sensitive to the concerns of such a jump, and yes, it is a shock, I would argue that this is a drop in the bucket. And part of this revenue should be back, put back to the city of Atlanta because not doing so, we are watching the liquidation of the roots of the city and the cultural upheaval. The way you get people to stay and the way you build the population is to actually take care of the people who live here and develop a workforce. And raising this tax is what I believe will help do it. It's part of the growing pains of the city. It is a right move. We haven't raised them in forever. And what really was the nail in the coffin for me is just how much money big businesses are currently making in this federal climate. And so this, we got to, this will also, in my mind, help close that wealth gap. So all for it. And I do appreciate us weighing in because it had not yet occurred to me, the breaks that are occurring on a federal level very recently. So I'm glad we covered that.
All right, I've got a couple of questions and comments. My first question is, this is a proposed, this is a proposed substitute. And so before we make a motion and see if we want to have the substitute before us for further discussion, who can describe the nature of the substitute? What changes are there in there that we have yet to discuss?
The, Robert, can you come up? There's small administrative tweaks to the substitute and Robert will highlight those now.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Robert Moses, Chief Administrative Officer, Department of Finance. There are three minor changes to the ordinance with the substitute. The first one is to Section 7 of the ordinance, which just updates some references to state law. The second change is to the section concerning attorneys. So we cannot require attorneys to register with us. But we have drafted a provision which encourages attorneys to register with the electronic system to make it administratively easier for them to pay the occupation tax. And the third change removes a provision that was going to repeal a provision of the tax code. We're just going to leave that in the code for the time being, the three amendments.
All right, thank you. So for discussion purposes, I'm going to make the motion formally to bring the substitute before us for further discussion. Second by Juan, let's open the vote.
That vote is open. Vote is closed, 78s, 21s.
Okay. Just a couple of comments. Yeah, Mr. Wong, go ahead. Okay, so one of my concerns is, you know, if we're going to do this, we're going to raise, we're going to raise the fee. The least we can do is make the experience of, the online experience, something other than the third circle of hell, which has been just an embarrassment. So sell us on how that process is now going to be just fun and easy.
Absolutely. So we have been, over the last year, onboarding a new tool, a state-of-the-art tool, going away from our legacy intergov system that was a Tyler Technologies that was rolled out in post-pandemic. It was really a poor rollout process. We have been working with a company called Fast Technologies that does the same work for the state. The system is best-in-class system. The team in Lawrence and the team is working on bringing that system onboard for full implementation in January 1. There will be a soft launch next week into the system so that individuals will start to transact. And what we are looking forward to, what this system could do, it'll be a much better and much easier process for applying for and renewing your occupational business taxes.
So, you know, fee, in a, in a perfect pristine world, you know, fees are not supposed to be thought of as sources of revenue. They're supposed to cover the cost of-
That is correct.
Provision of a service.
Correct.
And so everyone can hear it again, especially me. What we're currently charging, charging covers what percentage?
31%.
31%. So I will close by saying, there is no business out there that would knowingly undercharge its customers by 70% where you would not have a business. Mr. Wong.
Mine's more of a procedural question here. I mean, Mr. CFO, you had alluded to it in your response earlier. Even if we pass this, we, the opportunity for the businesses to come talk to the administration in terms of potentially the second-year lever thresholds and timing, that's still available, right? And maybe that, at this point, given the deadlines that y'all are facing, that's probably the best path that we can take.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I just want to confirm.
We'll have plenty of time, coordinate with all stakeholders before the second phase implementation. If there is some additional lessons learned or is there some additional tweaks that can be had, we can certainly come back and we'd love to do it in, you know, much more friendlier timeframe so that we're not pressed into the last hour.
All right, thank you. You know, as someone who's lobbied, probably second only to Mr. Hillis here, to pick up the low-hanging fruit, which is to update our fees. I mean, this is, this is 1999, for crying out loud. So, and as, I've been on this committee now for 22 years. I feel absolutely obligated to move approval on substitute. Second by Hillis. Questions or comments? Let's vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed, 78s, 21s.
The odds have it so ordered. We're of course open to other ideas and suggestions. I would suggest they be something other than, we don't like it because it's more than we're used to paying. That takes us, all right, public hearing's been closed. Mr. Evans, could you sound our loan consent agenda item?
There are two items. Number, item number two on the agenda, 2501508, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee to amend Ordinance 181476 adopted by the Atlanta City Council on November 5th, 2018, and approved as per City Charter Section 2-403 on November 13th, 2018, to update parcel tax ID numbers and for other purposes. Item number three, 2501509, an ordinance by Finance Executive Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the city of Atlanta to execute all appropriate documents that would grant Georgia Power Company for an amount not less than $377,500.00. Four utility easements across the city-owned real property located in the land lots listed here, known as Spinks Collins Park, located at 2101 Collins Drive Northwest, Atlanta, Georgia 30318, to permit Georgia Power Company to go in, upon, along, across, under, and through the property as defined in the easements waiving real estate and procurement code, Article 10, Subdivision 3, Section 2-1571 and 2-1572 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and for other purposes.
All right, thank you. Takes us to regular agenda. Our first ordinance for second reading is 2501504. It's an ordinance by SHUK to amend the charter specifically as listed to update the requirement for budgeted anticipations not to exceed 99% of the normal revenue collected during the prior year and to amend the code sections indicated to update the processes for budget amendments and for other purposes. Mr. CFO. Yeah, Ms. Beck, you're it.
Excuse me, is this, if I'm correct, is this the paper that was dual-referred, Mr. Evans?
No.
Or, no, it wasn't, but this is about, okay, never mind, I thought.
Can we please come back to this one?
Okay. We will mush on then to item number five, 2501505. I will move to bring forward.
There's no substitute in hand yet.
This is, you know, let me sound the caption and then the requested play here is to send this forward without rec so that we will get a substitute that fills in the blanks. This is about the council carryforward true-up. 2501505, ordinance by SHUK, amending the FY '26 general fund budget by anticipating and appropriating an amount not to exceed blank from the council president and council carryforward accounts with a net amount of blank to be returned to the council president and council member carryforward accounts for the true-up of FY '26 carryforward balances and for other purposes. Motion is to send it forward without rec on condition of receiving a substitute. Second by Juan, if there's no questions, let's open that vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed.
All right. Resolutions, 25R 3842. All right, let's go back to the previous item. Mr. CFO.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, council members. I had to get my bearings straight. So this one is an ordinance to allow us to amend the charter so that when anticipating budget revenues in the future, we can anticipate past the 99% prior year limitation that's set in the charter. So this allows us to budget in a more realistic fashion, especially as we start to change the fees and the fee structures for many of the different services in the city of Atlanta. We can project that additional increase with much more nuance than just being limited to 99% of prior year collections. And Mr. Moses is here to talk about any nuances to the legislation if needed.
Good afternoon again. The other change that's proposed to the city charter refers to budget amendments. And this is just to codify the current practice. That is, we do budget, what are called budget adjustments, where we can move budget from one line item to another, but only within certain categories. We will still maintain a level of budgetary control if we're moving funds between, say, the personnel line item and other line items, which require a transfer request. Or if it's between funds, that's going to require legislation, which is the current case.
All right, can you cite just a good real-life example of a benefit of eliminating the 99% sacred phrase?
Yeah, a good one is what we just passed today. So knowing that there will be a Phase Two coming in to fiscal year 2027, we can anticipate that additional revenue that's going to be collected in the 2027 fiscal year into our budget. So I mentioned before that the, each iteration will be about a $10 to $15 million increase. That is something we can now project and budget accordingly, rather than having to budget 99% of last year's collections.
You know, before handing it over to Mr. Wong, I'm kind of double-clutching on this. This is, I grew up on this. I can kind of hear Rick Anderson right now talking about the importance of that, what he saw as a control. Mr. Wong.
Yeah, that's, I'm, I've got a little bit of heartburn on this one, but I understand the motivation and I'm trying to figure out a path forward. I mean, this works when your budgets are ever increasing. But in a period of contraction, that's when this is the most valuable because it does kind of at least hold your purse strings back a little bit in a way that mitigates if you even under-project the budget forecast. And the other piece that, this relies on the discipline of the CFO and the finance department as well as council that if a budget comes in, it doesn't seem to be a tether in any- sort of, if you came in and you'd be proposing a $100 million larger budget, that there is any sort of, again, tether, that if the finance department could convince you that we're going to get all $100 million, that, that you'd be budgeting all the way up there for expenses. So I, I just, I'm trying to reconcile those two pieces because we could very well start seeing ourselves in contracting budget years in the very near future. And then again, the, is there another way to incorporate some discipline on the upside so that, you know, you, you're only permitting a certain percentage of the increase? I get, I get trying to not get weighed down by the back here, but maybe it's one of those things where, yeah, you may take, paint a rosy picture, but for every dollar that you're telling us you're going to get, we're like, yeah, we're going to give you nine, you know, you can expend 90 cents of that. I, I don't know, but I'm, I'm sure y'all have given that some thought, so I would love to hear that.
Yeah. So what we're envision is, of course, when you're coming through the budget process and you're setting the anticipated budget for the year, there's two components. We're mandated to have a balanced budget, but to mitigate against an artificial creep of a anticipation is to also have a breakdown with city council on the front end about how we arrived to that anticipation total from the prior year's budget. So in the fiscal condition of the city, that is probably the most opportune time for council and CFO to test the assumptions of the anticipation and maybe laying out what those assumptions clearly are for each revenue line item going forward. But, you know, I think we're, we introduced this, we're, we're away from the FY27 budget. Happy to have some more discussion about this and a little bit more granularity with the FEC members. We want to get it right, so there's not a rush for it to be passed today. It is a charter amendment, requires three reads. Happy to have that discussion and maybe come up with some mitigation strategies so that you're not overly aggressive on your assumptions as well.
I mean, I, I think part of the problem here, I'll just verbalize it, i- if we knew that you and your entire finance team were going to be here in perpetuity, we'd have less angst and take that as the compliment it is. Some of us, some of us are from around here, though. You're like my 15th CFO.
I, I thank you for that. The team does work hard to make sure that we get it right. We're happy to hold this, council member, and just have the necessary dialogue to make sure that, you know, that the charter and the spirit of charter is aligned. It was a very conservative, constrained addition to the charter that was put in place at a very tough time. It was put in place in, after the 09, 08 financial crisis, and it was a good guardrail for many years. Maybe too restrictive, but what's the right balance? We're happy to have that discussion and come up with what that solution should be.
Motion to hold. Second by Baccari. If there's nothing else, let's open that vote. Appreciate your flexibility on that.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, 68s, 08s. Item held.
All right, thank you. Resolution is 25R 3842, resolution by Louis Winston Dozier Westmoreland Bond and Collins, requesting the Office of Contract Compliance in coordination with law and finance, conduct an audit of the Lakewood Amphitheater Lease Agreement with Live Nation Entertainment, Inc., including payments to the, including payments to the Community Benefits Agreement Fund, and to report findings and recommendations to the Atlanta City Council and for other purposes. In briefing, this has come up, it's been told to me that the, that the data sought is already available, and, and so I will second Mr. Winston's motion to hold this paper.
The vote is open.
Let's open the vote.
Vote is closed, 78s, 08s. Item held.
Thank you. That takes us to 25R 3845, and I will move to bring forward a substitute. Second. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed.
All right, 25R 3844 is a resolution by Finance Exec and substituted by Finance Exec, authorizing the CFO or his designated to execute a Treasury Management Services Agreement with Cariba Core on behalf of Finance for a term of five years with two one-year renewal options, an amount not to exceed $245,000 for year one, and an amount not to exceed $105,000 annually for years two through, for year two. All contracted work will be charged and paid from the sources indicated. Mr. Knight.
Good afternoon, Chairman Shook, members of the Immediately upon becoming the treasurer, sorry, Courtney Knight, Chief of Treasury Debt and Investments, immediately upon becoming treasurer over three and a half years ago, I recognize the need to try to automate some of the operations that are done manually, particularly with respect to our cash and investments activities. So it has taken that much time, over three years, to systematically assess our needs and try to survey and match them up with the resources that are available in the marketplace to help us automate those systems. So this resolution today is the result of a procurement process, and kudos to Deputy Treasurer Karen Carter for, for shepherding this through the procurement process of assessing treasury management systems that are out there in the marketplace and recommending Cariba as not only the most price-effective solution, but also because they partner with another company known as Elire, which has significant experience in operating in the Oracle Cloud environment that we work within. So this is an opportunity to enhance the clarity, the visibility over the city's cash and investments activity, and support the critical decision-making that we make within the treasury operations. I'll also say that the system includes an artificial intelligence component that will enable us to forecast our cash, our revenues, our debt, and integrate all of that into a formal decision-making automated process.
All right, thank you. I will make a motion to bring the substitute before us. Second by Baccari, let's open that procedural vote.
The substitute is before you. This would be a motion to approve if you're ready.
Oh, okay. That's my motion, approve on substitute. Second by Baccari. Let's open the vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed, 78s, 08s.
All right. Takes us to a paper that we're going to hold, 25R 3846, resolution by Finance Exec, authorizing the mayor to execute the RFP indicated, Workers' Comp Third Party Administration with blank on behalf of DOF for a term of two years with two one-year renewal options and an amount not to exceed blank, et cetera. Motion's to hold. Second. Second by Juan, let's open that vote.
The vote is open. Vote is closed.
25R 3847, resolution by Finance Exec to amend resolution 25R 3294, adopted on the date indicated and approved per the Charter section cited here on the date listed, to provide that the donation shall be payable over the 2026 fiscal year and for other purposes. I will second that. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, let's open the vote.
The vote is open.
And then we have one held paper.
That vote is closed, 78s, 08s.
The ayes have it. We're now moving to item 23 on page nine. It's 2501375, an ordinance by Ms. Baccari to provide for the annexation of property located at 380 Wilkinson Drive at the exact address indicated here into the corporate limits of the city of Atlanta pursuant to the one-on-percent method to extend the boundaries of the APS system to notify DCA and the state of Georgia of such annexation and for other purposes. So I take it the companion pieces have caught up, and so I will second Ms. Baccari's motion to approve. If there's nothing else, let's open the vote.
The vote is open.
All right, the ayes have it. Is there any other business to come before us, Mr. Evans?
No, sir.
Anyone with any announcements? We're adjourned.